Ready? We are now reconvening in open session. We will now consider action on closed session items. Hattie, Mrs. Heiliger.
I move that the Fort Bend Independent School District authorized the superintendent and its attorney to negotiate an inter-local agreement with Fort Bend County relating to the ban on cemetery discovered at the James Reese CTE Center site.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Heiliger and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We will now, let's see here, Mrs. James.
Yes, Mr. President. I move to propose termination of term employment contract of Jorge Castillon for good cause and to propose suspension without pay and authorize the superintendent to provide notice to Jorge Castillon of the board's action.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mrs. James?
Yes, Mr. Reddine. I move that the Board of Trustees propose to terminate the term employment contract of Rumor Roy for good cause and authorize the superintendent to provide notice to Rumor Roy of the board's action.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mr. Rice?
Mr. President, I move that the Fort Bend Independent School District adopt the resolution authorizing the use of eminent domain to acquire an approximately 20-acre tract of land located along the east line of Thompson Ferry Road north of Knights Court as further described in Exhibit A of the resolution for the public purpose of constructing and operating school facilities.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. Tossin'. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Next, we will do our demographic update.
We're gonna, yeah, I sent them text messages to say quickly, so they've been sitting here a while, but I'm sure they're ready to get it over with as well. Beth is gonna introduce our presenters this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. With us again this year, we have our demographers from Brian, Pasa, and so Dr. Tapera and Justin Silhavi are here this evening to present the long-term projections through the 2028 school year, and I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you. Well, yes, we definitely have maps and our report for you guys today, the administration should have that, maybe they've already given it to you. What you have in front of you is a little bit more lengthy, so we've abridged this version. It is getting late, but trust me, we have plenty to talk about. So just in a nutshell, our 2018-2019 update included, of course, housing projections and enrollment trends. We also received input from principals in a meeting back in December, so we were able to include that in our projections if they had any interesting facts or relevant information toward enrollment for next school year. Looking at fall 2017, we don't have fall 2018 data yet for every school district, but Fort Bend was the fourth-largest district in the Houston metro area with over 75,000 students. And when you look at a five-year change, as you know, you've grown by 5,600 students over that, actually, between 2012 and 2017. You're really still ranked high. You're growing at about 1.5% annually, which has been very, very consistent over the last four or five years. So that's great. It kind of keeps in line there, but overall, when you look at the fastest-growth school districts in Texas, you guys are number 10. So, growing at 1,129 in 2017 ranked you 10th in the state. Eight of those top 10, by the way, are in the Houston area, mostly because of the large geography that the school districts here have. So, we're gonna jump right in here. This may be a little hard to see with this lighting, but I'll help you out. I do want to point out kindergarten and our births this year, our birth rate. I've been hinting at this the last few years, that we are about to see an uptick in our youth. Since about 2012-2013, our births have actually been increasing after the financial recession, and you've had so many new residents moving in. So this line right here, this dark red line that you can barely see, is actually the birth trend line, just specific to this school district, based on data from the Health Department of the state. And you'll notice, we're right on the cusp of an increase. In fact, from today, moving four years forward, if you relied solely on birth data, you would think the kindergarten class would gain 1,000 students. That won't happen. It never really does. But what I want to point out is that we're predicting, we're projecting a rise. We've calculated for a moderate rise, based on all this data, but we've also used higher rates of growth in the kindergarten class or lower in our low and high-growth scenarios, which I'll get to later on. But it's coming, and we just need to be prepared for that slightly. So when we look at Fort Bend and what sets it apart, this is one of the reasons. When you look at the economically disadvantaged student population here, Fort Bend, out of the 10 largest school districts, is number two in terms of the least amount of economically disadvantaged students. So housing developers and residents realize this, and they want to move to this area. A lot kind of hinges on quality of life, and this is one of those factors. So we also take a look every year at our charter school and private school enrollment, and not surprisingly, we mention this every year, your charter school, the percentage of students that are in K-12 that attend charter schools from this school district is right about 3582 for this school year. That's an estimate based on surveys of new schools and data from last year. So, every year, we kind of track how many students in K-12 are actually enrolled in Fort Bend schools. It's hovering around 89 to 90%. It's actually been ticking down a little because of growth in the charter school and private school sector. So let's talk about these charter school students for a bit. Fort Bend ranks number three in Houston metro with 3,400, well, over 3,400 charter school students in 2017. Houston and Haley for number two. Now, when you look at it percentage-wise, you actually drop to nine. Only 4.4% of your students are in charter schools. And when I say "your students," I mean your resident K-12 students. Now, the economy plays a very important role in how we project enrollment. No one's going to move here unless there are new jobs, right? Of course, natural population increase is a part of population projections as well, but the last 12 months of our records here, basically all of 2018, show 111,000 new jobs were created in Houston metro. The Houston Partner, the Greater Houston Partnership has actually suggested there will be 71,000 new jobs in 2019. So still a continued increase, not as much as we had post-Harvey when we were rebuilding, but we're still projected to have an increase in employment. So, in Fort Bend, one of these growth factors is actually in the medical field. So 13% of those 71,000 new jobs is projected to be in the medical field. And you're right down the road from the Med Center, and I've been saying this for a few years now, the Med Center is seeing a boom in hospital and administrative growth. And in fact, just this year, the UT Health System is, has announced that they're building their new psychiatric hospital in the Med Center. So, when you start factoring all this, over 5,000 full-time jobs are being created in the Med Center over the next year or two, and that's really just going to continue. And the south part of your district is right down the road. Low employment rates continue. Oil and gas, I don't want to talk about it a whole lot, but right now, the price of oil is at $50 a barrel. Some of you alluded to this earlier, we just have to kind of watch that. We know the industry can survive at that point. If it drops lower, which it did back in the fall, it could start, you know, growth could slow a bit. So, with that out of the way, housing is really what, of course, drives growth in Fort Bend, and we'll talk about some specifics now. You guys have, once again, for the fourth year in a row, ranked number one in Houston metro for the number of housing starts as a school district. Actually, number two this year is your neighbor, Lamar CIST. My guess is they will actually overtake you soon, and I'll get to that in a minute. But anyway, your housing starts have increased 21% from 2017 to 2018, and these are starts, so they haven't been occupied yet. In the metro as a whole, starts were up 10%. So you're actually, you're increasing at a higher rate than the metro area. Whoops, I went back. I do want to touch on a couple of new developments that have come online in the last year. One of them is Parks Edge, which is in the Hightower feeder, just north of Lake Olympia Parkway, along the Fort Bend Parkway. At the time of our analysis, no homes have been occupied yet, but we're expecting that to change really soon. And Huntington Place, we've been talking about some of the developments along 521 for the last few years, and how they're about to really kick off. Huntington Place has kicked off, so it's in the very corner of your district on 521, almost in Brazoria County, so that's gotten going. And Lakeview Retreat, on the other side of the district, the northern border, that also got going. It's in the Bush feeder. One interesting land transaction lately has been over 400 acres. It's in the Willow Ridge feeder. We've been watching this for years. It's been purchased by the developer who built Winfield Lakes, which is just to the south. So, we think some of that's going to get going as well. It's going to be planned along future Chimney Rock, which hasn't been built yet, but the county does plan to extend that road. So, a couple of other notes. Again, in the 521 corridor, Southern Colony, which is just north of Huntington Place, they saw 132 homes occupied in 2018. This development is really getting going fast. It's going to be built out in a few years. This year, there are over 117 homes under construction, and the only reason I really point this out is because a lot of you may not get down there, it's in the corner of the district, and that is more homes under construction than in Harvest Green right now. So Harvest Green being one of your top four communities. Glendale Lakes along 521 again, it's about to ramp up, so they've only had one builder. You're about to see a second builder, and they're going to be planning over 150, 150 to 200 closings a year in the next, I'd say in the next two to three years. So all three of those developments along 521 are in the process of ramping up. So when we look at 10-year projections today through 2028, I've highlighted the top developments. There are many others, but these are the top ones. You'll see some familiar names, like Sienna Plantation with over 5,000 single-family homes to be occupied. That actually will be the number-one subdivision in the district, but there are a lot of others here as well. Harvest Green and Riverstone, Aliana, all with over 1,000 new homes projected in 10 years. And here's that 521 corridor, Glendale Lakes, Southern Colony, Huntington Place. And not to scare you, but there are still, there's still a possibility of more development in this area. We have about 500 acres of land still unaccounted for that will likely develop, and it will probably start developing in the next 10 years. They're just not listed on here. Okay. Anything, any development here in red will be built out, at least 75% of these numbers will be occupied within the first five years of the projection period. And I mention this because you'll notice most of these northern developments are all in red. So we're anticipating somewhat of a rapid build-out of this district. It won't build out in the next 10 years by any means, but especially in the north, we're going to be running out of lots, mainly because we're running out of land. So when we look at multifamily, I don't have specifics on here, but what we put are generalizations of where new multifamily apartments will be located. The red blobs are pretty much guaranteed, so they're either under construction right now or planned, or will probably happen in the next three to four years. Or, they're going to have a lot of students. So you'll notice the Grand Parkway, and then again in Sienna Plantation, and we have some scattered development in the eastern-central portion of the district, where we're anticipating the most multifamily construction with the highest impacts in student enrollment. Some of these blue dots, we just don't really know. So when we look at each type of development, single-family, multifamily, those are the two main ones. I alluded to this earlier. The blue bar here is the first five years of the projection period, and the red bar is the latter five years. So you'll see that of these 23,000 single-family homes we're projecting, the bulk of them will be constructed in the first five years. You're slowly going to be trailing off because you're running out of land. You're going to continue growing, you just won't have as many homes occupied. The multifamily does the opposite, though, just because a lot of these developments tend to save their multifamily reserves for last. So, looking at students per home is key, because we don't, we know developments that are geared toward non-traditional, you know, unconventional, single-family housing may not have as many students. Some are completely restricted to 55-plus. In fact, there's a section of Sienna Plantation that is about to get started in the next year or two that will be geared to, they call them active-adult communities. I don't believe you guys have one in Fort Bend yet. Maybe, I can't remember, but I believe it's something on the verge of 500 homes that will be age-restricted. So, we include those in the projections, but we have to know that those homes won't have students. Often, what that does is creates more student load in some of the neighboring neighborhoods. So when you look at a district-wide average of all single-family homes, you're at .54, so for every 100 homes, you have 54 students. Multifamily, .41, that multifamily number has been about the same, but that single-family number has been dropping ever so slightly since 2013. So what that means is, some of your older neighborhoods, like, say, New Territory, First Colony, they just don't have as many students anymore. We call it aging out. The demographics are changing. People are getting older. Now, we have to take all this, and, oh, I did want to point this out, sorry, I forgot about this slide. This is showing you our student change in those existing neighborhoods, like I mentioned, New Territory, First Colony. Any neighborhood that's not actively developing, we've been seeing a loss of students. And this, you can see here in all grades, this year, we lost over 900 students in those existing subdivisions. That number's been increasing. Just two years ago, you had only been losing 400 to 500. And you'll see that, when you look at the lower grades, that number's been increasing, but look at six through 12, it's just starting to hit that cohort. So three years ago, we really didn't lose anyone. Yes, last year, we lost 200, this year, over 300. So as everyone ages, the older grade levels are now losing more students. So, our moderate-growth scenario is showing, next year, the finance folks mentioned it earlier, over 77,200 students. By 2028, 87,000. Now, the low and the high, of course, are lower and higher, so we could be looking at, in 10 years, either 89,500, under a scenario that might say, your kindergarten keeps increasing, it really surprises us, and we just see more and more kindergarten students because of those higher number of babies born. A lower-growth scenario of 82,000 could be something like, three or four charter schools open up right in the middle of the district. We don't know when that's going to happen. We try to gauge that, we try to project, but sometimes they can open up overnight. An economic downturn, for instance, could also lower these projections. So, we have to consider that. When we look at the last couple of years of projections, going back to fall 2016, how well do we do, or where do we normally fall in our projections, I guess is the question? The red line is your actual enrollment, and these blue lines are the low, moderate, and high-growth scenario. So in 2016 and 2017, the projections fell somewhere between the low and the moderate. This year, was actually just over the high by about 50 students. Little surprising, but there you go, it kind of jumps around a little bit. It's usually somewhere in there on either side of the moderate. So, now, Dr. Stacy Tapera will take this. Do you want to keep this up? Okay.
Thank you, you've been very patient. I will try to breeze through this pretty quickly. So, you just heard about the district-wide projections and the 87,000 students by the end of the 10-year projection period, but where are those students going to live is the important question. This is kind of a heat map illustrating the planning units in which the most students are projected to be gained. This happens to be elementary students, but the heat map looks the same, basically, for all grade groups. The orange and red planning units illustrate where at least 300 students are projected to be gained over the next 10 years. So, up in the far northwest, you see the last parts of, the last sections of Aliana are orange, and those are in the Yusafzai Attendance Zone, and so that is taken care of as far as future capacity. And the other areas of red and orange are, not surprisingly, in the southeast. This supports what Justin just told you about the northwest beginning to reach build-out in the big master-plan communities up there over the next 10 years, and the southeast being the focus area, focal area of the highest growth. So again, we are focused on the 521 corridor with Glendale Lakes and Southern Colony and Huntington Place, as you've heard, and the increasing potential for students in that area, as well as the southern part of Sienna Plantation. So, how is this growth related to the school capacities? Again, the orange and red represent the areas of highest utilization. So this looks, this map looks at the number of students in 10 years, in 2028, compared to the capacity of the schools right now. And so where will the most overcrowding be happening? So, not surprisingly, Neal and Madden are projected to be about 160, 180% overutilized within 10 years. And that's not a surprise to anyone, and even going through this recent zoning effort. The recommendations eventually acknowledged that the zones that were established for Yusafzai took into account that another elementary school will be needed in the next few years up in that area. In the central part of the district, Commonwealth is projected to be about 160% utilized in 10 years, and Leonetti at 195%, and Heritage Rose takes the prize at 211% utilization. That means that Heritage Rose and Leonetti will each contain enough resident students to support two schools in 10 years. The next slide is the numbers that support, that went into that map. I know you can't read them, and it's not for, not for the purpose of reading and understanding, but for your reference later. But this illustrates, for example, Heritage Rose here with 2,400 students projected in 10 years. If you are going to jump in, delve into this data, like I know Mrs. James will, please understand that the first column is the current enrollment. The second column is the projected enrollment in red, this projected enrollment for next fall. Now, enrollment is different from resident students. All of the blue numbers from 2020 on are in blue, because those are the resident students. The far corner shows the net transfers, and those are taken into account in the enrollment factor. So you cannot compare directly the red column and the blue columns. You cannot say that there's growth from 19 to 20 based on comparing these numbers, because the transfers are a wild card in there. These are the rest of the elementary schools, and this just illustrates, for example, that 151 net students transfer into Ridgemont, of course, for the Early Literacy Center. At the middle-school level, let's look now at how the projected student enrollment compares to the capacity at the middle schools. Bowie is projected, it looks scary at, with an orange color there, but Bowie is actually only projected to be about 120% utilized, or about 350 students over capacity. However, of course, the focus of the long-term growth that we've been talking about is all contained in the Thornton Middle School Attendance Zone, and so by the end of this projection period, Thornton is projected to be 157% utilized, or about 2,300 students. And here, again, we have the numbers with Thornton here at about 2,300 students. And finally, at the high-school level, again, not a surprise, the current overcrowding at Ridge Point is only going to be accelerated and exacerbated by the upcoming future development, and this isn't a surprise, this has been coming. It has accelerated some this year, but over the next 10 years, Ridge Point could be, if nothing else were to happen, Ridge Point could have 194% utilization. That would be basically two high schools' worth of students living in what is currently the Ridge Point Attendance Zone. And so, this translates to about 5,000 students projected to live in the Ridge Point Attendance Zone by 2028. And so therefore, the planned opening of High School Number 12 in 2022 will go a long way to accommodating this overcrowding. So in summary, you've heard about near-term growth in the northwest, which is being accommodated by the opening of Yusafzai Elementary in the fall, as well as planned additions at Oakland and Patterson, and eventually a new elementary school in the northwest. The both near-term and long-term growth in the southeast has accelerated over the past year, both in Sienna Plantation and along the 521 corridor. It presents overcrowding challenges for all grade groups, and the plans for High School Number 12 will address this overcrowding at Ridge Point. So at this point, we can take any questions.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you. Once again, another excellent presentation. I appreciate it, it's a wealth of information that you presented. I'd like to start by kind of discussing the... I'd like to start by kind of discussing the charter school trend. So, I think last year, last spring when we talked about this, looked like we were losing about eight thousand kids and now it looks more, closer to nine thousand that are leaving the district. And as we talked, we talked, when we were talking about the budget last spring as well, that's about forty-five million dollars yearly to the district. And I kind of want to tie that into what you showed about transfers into the Early Literacy Center at Ridgemont. You showed one hundred and fifty-one students coming into that school. Now, I don't know that those, if, whether those are all inter-district transfers or people are actually coming back from some of those areas, but that's an example of how that investment can bring kids back into the district. So, that would be an interesting discussion. And I think you guys, you guys put out a memo maybe a few weeks ago talking about how you were looking into studying why kids were leaving the district. So, I'll be interested to hear that. On your projected elementary school growth slide that you showed, were those numbers per year?
No, that was over ten years.
Okay. So, for example, let's just find it. Yeah, 2018, okay, that one. So, in the yellow area, what are you saying? This, we're going to add one hundred and forty-five to two ninety-nine over ten years?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that. And so, since we've talked about numbers and, you know, we talked about taking some action at this time in the spring, I wanted to bring up one specific issue as far as rebalancing enrollment at a couple of middle schools. So, since this is here, we're talking about this, we just saw numbers, I would actually like to bring that up if everybody's okay with that or would you rather get some of your questions? Because it's up to you guys. We can come back to that. If, I think that might be better. Why don't you guys ask some questions and I'll come back because that would be more specific and...
Mr. Rosenthal, I would add that that is actually included as part of the next report.
Okay, good, good, good. Okay.
Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and thank you for a very nice presentation. I have a, and you're right, my binder's already marked up. I don't know what matters with the rest of the board. I have a question if you, on this particular, I think this, well, this isn't the one exactly I was thinking of, but could you just say again, the number of elementary schools needed in the southeast part of the district? Basically, your estimation is two additional, three additional in the ten-year period? What was the numbers in that area, in that region, please?
We have not done a complete long-range plan, which we will complete in the next month or so and present to the district. But in the numbers that I quoted here, Heritage Rose is projected to have enough resident students to fill two schools. And Leonetti is projected to have enough students to fill two schools.
Okay. And Sienna Crossing looks yellow as well. So, okay, well, we'll just wait on that, but I would, Dr. Dupree, I'd be interested in that information when it's available to the district. Thank you very much.
Ms. Tossein.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. So, I appreciate the information. Actually, we all delve into the data pretty deeply and look at it because we don't take these decisions very lightly. And some of us live it every single day since I am on the southeast side and my kids attend these schools that are, that are really not only overcrowded now, but are going to be extremely overcrowded in the next few years. So, I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for highlighting for us exactly what we know we're facing as we accelerate the Number Twelve High School and as we look to gain space and property and all of that kind of stuff in order to keep up with our growth because this, this does show us where we're going to be within the next ten years. Not built out like some people have said to us or said that they thought was going to happen, not completely built out. And a lot of that growth is going to be in that southeast area. I'm actually, my grandparents live in Southern Colony and my mother does, so we're watching the house, the rooftops go up and they're building very, very quickly. I know when Heritage Rose opened, it opened half-full because that particular development did not progress as we thought it was. My kids attended it half-full and then attended it on the other end when now it's overcapacity. So, we've watched that area grow very quickly. My question for you is, is in that Willow Ridge feeder pattern area, in the Chimney Rock area, what are you guys hearing? What's being projected for a timeline on that?
To be honest, it's a little unclear. So, we've been watching this for, at least I have, for over a decade.
Yeah.
So, the fact that they've actually purchased the land tells you something. The other thing to remember is since it is the same owner as the development to the south, those lots are running out very quickly. So, they only have about three or four years left in that development. So, when we project, when it's a little unclear, as so a timeline, we tend to look at the build-out of the neighboring neighborhood because usually they try to tie that in. So, my guess, again, this is an educated guess with a little bit of unclarity, is that within the next four to six years, you might see something happening.
Okay.
It may tie in with the county building the road, is my guess.
Well, that was my question is that I know that, I know that the county's doing some things over in that area and I'm watching some of the, some of the road construction going on over in that area. So, I didn't know where that was on the list of road construction being done by the county. And I guess you guys don't have any additional information.
It was in their last bond for Chimney Rock. You know, whether or not they prioritize that, I know the engineering, some of the engineering has already gone out. It might take two to three years to get it built.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we, again, a lot of it's still a little unclear, unfortunately.
Well, as we know, you have to have a road.
Right.
In order to be able to access things. And so, hopefully, they'll, they'll get that done. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Tossein. Ms. Heliger.
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of something that Mrs. Tossein said. I can't pronounce your last name.
DePere.
Yes, Ms. DePere and to Mrs. James. I, as a board member, are very concerned about the data that is seen and I use it to make the decisions around zoning, around programs, around all the things that happen in our district. So, I kind of, it might have been a joke, but I found the exception to that comment that Ms. James was the only person that might be concerned about the data here. So, I want to make it sure very clear that the rest of us are very concerned about the data that we're looking at. That's why we stayed here at ten fifty-eight at night to make sure that we review this data. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Thank you very much for the presentation. Any other questions?
We will now be moving on to our annual enrollment review. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, as we, as required by board policy and as always follows a demographic update, we've prepared the annual enrollment review and Beth is prepared to move through that with the board.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Well, Ms. Perez gets that up for us. I'll just give you an overview of what we're going to speak about this evening. The purpose of the annual enrollment review is to focus on the next school year. So, it'll be primarily about the nineteen-twenty school year, although you will hear reference to some long-term projections as well. We'll review that process. We'll talk mainly about the campuses that we project, based on PASA's projection, to be overutilized, which is over a hundred percent of the design capacity, or underutilized, which we define as below eighty percent of the design capacity. We'll talk through some strategy for 2019-20 and then provide to you some long-term considerations for consideration and discussion by the board this evening. As we do each year, we are, we follow the framework for the annual student enrollment review through the guidance of policy CT Local, where we plan for efficient and effective use of our district assets. We're also guided by policy FC Local, which focuses on school attendance areas where we determine if we need to bring forward recommendations to the superintendent or provide recommendations to the board for consideration at that level. This year, we're recommending to Dr. Dupree that we do a multitude of activities as we look at the growth in the northwest and the southeast and some of our more underutilized campuses. We want to continue to limit student enrollment transfers, but also encourage transfers in some of our campuses to help to mitigate some of the overutilization. We're going to talk to you this evening about the way that, in which we're going to be using portable buildings and how we will continue to cap enrollment at one of our elementary schools in particular. We use the PASA projections certainly to guide that work and we also align that to our current student enrollment. Tonight, as we review, I said we will look at those campuses that are overutilized, being over a hundred percent of the design capacity. And when we talk about design capacity, I just want to operationally define that for the audience. The design capacity is the maximum number of seats in the school building. It's adjusted by a utilization factor of eighty-five percent and this excludes portable buildings, portable classroom buildings. And I'll just give you an example of how that's calculated. For example, Yusaf Saei was built for a thousand students. With that eighty-five percent utilization factor, you'll see that the design capacity for Yusaf Saei is eight hundred and fifty. Sorry. So, let's focus in the northwest portion of our district. With the activation of the new elementary school, our fifty-first, being Yusaf Saei Elementary, Madden Elementary will remain over a hundred percent in the nineteen-twenty school year at a hundred and ten percent actually of the design capacity. There are currently five portables on site. So, if you calculate the capacity of those five portables, you're looking at eighty-five point five four percent at Madden Elementary. And we know that we're expecting classroom additions, a ten-pack of classes to come online in 2022-23. That's the same capacity that you'll see in those temporary buildings. So, ultimately, that utilization there at Madden will be eighty-five point fifty-four percent as we move into the 2022-23 school year. We are planning for a January 2020 opening for Yusaf Saei and this would relieve overutilization at Madden with the implementation of all five portable buildings. This would require Yusaf Saei students who are currently attending Madden Elementary and some in overflow at Oyster Creek Elementary to be split and housed between two campuses as we stage for the opening in January. Students would remain on the two campuses August through December. And it's important to point out that staff, based on some feedback from the community and some other factors, staff is currently studying the feasibility of an August 2020 opening versus a January 2020 opening. We're continuing to work through some of that data to bring a decision or a recommendation forward at the end of this month. Neal Elementary will be at just slightly over a hundred percent, at a hundred point six three percent of the design capacity with no current need for portable buildings. Just a reminder, we are online for twelve classroom additions that we expect to come online in 2020-2021 to help with that utilization. Oakland Elementary School will be at a hundred and eight point four, point zero four of the design capacity. There are six portable buildings that will be used at Oakland, bringing that total capacity to eighty-one point one three percent. We know, based on some of what PASA said and the work that we've done with them, we know that we need additional classroom additions at Oakland in the future and possibly at Patterson, as well as an additional elementary school, potentially our fifty-sixth elementary school in that area of the district as we continue to experience growth. While we have growth, we also have some underutilized campuses. So, these are our campuses below eighty percent. And some of the factors or some of the things that we'll be doing to better utilize these buildings or utilize the sites is in instances where there might be portable buildings, some are being pulled off. And as an example of that, Jordan Elementary is releasing two portable buildings. I think later this evening, you have some information on those portable building gains and losses across the district and I can provide more specifics as we move through the presentation if you have any questions. But the elementary schools that we have below eighty percent are Fleming, Jordan, Mission Bend, Mission Glen, Sagin. And our middle schools are Crockett, Hodges Bend, and Sartarsha. There are no underutilized high schools in the northwest portion of the district. Yusaf Saei, should it open in January of 2020, would open at sixty-three point four one percent. So, it would be underutilized, but we know we're planning forward for that growth and we'll see, similar to what we, what we see in the southeast with Heritage Rose and Leonetti, we'll soon see that utilization increase at Yusaf Saei. In the central area of the district, our campuses that are overutilized, as we all are very familiar, we have Commonwealth Elementary, which would be at a hundred and twenty-two point zero nine percent if not for the cap and overflow to Settlers Way Elementary. There are currently six portables on site and that brings the utilization to ninety-two point two-two percent. This school year, there were a thousand twenty-three students that are enrolled at Commonwealth Elementary and that's with the cap and overflow to Settlers Way. Next year, that projection is nine hundred and ninety-five. And the reason for that change is it's a difference between the outgoing fifth-grade class and the incoming kindergarten class. And even through the cap and overflow to Settlers Way, we would have a kindergarten cohort coming in so that we would have a kindergarten class at Commonwealth Elementary. Cornerstone Elementary is at a hundred and seven point zero one with portables, eighty-four point six four percent of the design capacity. And Cornerstone's an area of the district where we will see a slight decrease in enrollment over the next ten-year period. Drawback is at a hundred and ten percent, just slightly over a hundred and ten percent. With portable buildings in place, they function at eighty-five point two-six percent. Sullivan is currently at a hundred and sixteen point eight percent. This area will, we believe, we will plan for relief as we contemplate the opening of Elementary School Fifty-Three in the area or classroom additions. That'll be part of that planning process that we anticipate in the fall of 2019 to begin those conversations. The schools in the central area of the district that are underutilized are listed on the screen there. You see quite a few elementary schools on the left-hand side. Our middle schools, First Colony is underutilized, Quell Valley's underutilized, and Kempner's underutilized. I do want to point out that in the central area of the district, Fort Settlement was not listed as overutilized. And that is because it's currently projected to be at one thousand six hundred and thirty-three students with a capacity of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-three, which is ninety-four point seven eight percent. But we know from the discussions and the feedback and the concerns that we're receiving that there are perceptions and concerns about that utilization. And so, I know we're going to talk a little bit further about that this evening and about the potential balancing between Fort Settlement and First Colony. First Colony Middle School is projected to be at nine hundred and forty-five students with a design capacity of one thousand five hundred and fifteen. So, the utilization at First Colony in the coming school year would be sixty-two point three eight percent. In the southeast portion of the district, we see Sienna Crossing and Ridge Point High School being our most overutilized campuses. They pointed out over the ten-year horizon, the growth in both of those areas. Heritage Rose is also an area of concern with continued growth. And while they're not going to be projected to be over a hundred percent in nineteen-twenty, they will shortly be over one hundred percent at Heritage Rose Elementary. At Sienna Crossing, the enrollment remains high. It's a hundred and eleven point seven six percent of the design capacity in nineteen-twenty. There are eight portable buildings on campus that will be used in nineteen-twenty, which brings the total overall utilization to ninety-four, I mean, pardon me, ninety-five point three two percent. We'll continue to model, to monitor enrollment there at Sienna Crossing and keep in contact with the principal, Dr. Ford. At Ridge Point, much discussion about Ridge Point over the last few months. There are twelve portable buildings, which will add six hundred seats in capacity. And as a reminder, there's a design team that is meeting once a month. That started February the thirteenth and the team consists of parents and those parents represent booster club, PTO, VIPs, volunteers, students, and staff, representing all of the attendance areas of the diverse campus. And the purpose of the team is to create a four-year plan that addresses creative scheduling, innovative practices, possible staggered dismissals, hall traffic, pattern, parking, and assuring a personalized learning environment for students regardless of the size of the campus. There's contemplation of a fourth launch to be planned for possible implementation. And with the current portable arrangement, we should, the schools plan to be able to accommodate the students and the projections for the nineteen-twenty school year. In this area, there's underutilization in the elementary schools that are listed on this table. And a point to note here as we contemplate... on this table, and a, a point to note here, as, as we contemplate, um, the expansion of the ELC program, the academic affairs team is, um, planning on a phased approach, so that by twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we will have a full expansion of the ELC in this area. Uh, this will require staff to engage and partner with the community around some boundary conversations beginning in the fall, so that we can do that phased implementation, um, through the programming, which would, would then allow, um, for the ELC to expand in the number of seats that could be provided to, um, to students in that program, and move students from second through fifth grade into area schools that have capacity, so that we can expand the program there at the ELC. As we look to the future, this is, um, just not deep details, but a glance at what's, what's coming in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We know Meadows will be, um, accommodated at Barrington Place Elementary as Meadows is rebuilt. We expect classroom additions at Neal, and then moving into twenty-one, twenty-two, Elementary Fifty-Two, Elementary Fifty-Three are classroom additions, and then the rebuild of Lakeview Elementary. And in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, the classroom additions at Madden, along with High School Twelve. We need to continuously monitor Heritage Rose, Neal, and I would add Sienna Crossing to that list, we'll add that in, in, um, on the online version. Other future considerations that we need to, uh, talk through this evening, Elementary Fifty-Three are classroom additions at Austin Parkway, Commonwealth and Settlers Way. Uh, the creation of this, it's pending the site acquisition, and, uh, we recommend planning toward this in the fall of twenty nineteen, so this coming fall, as we engage with the community in that boundary planning process. Other considerations in the area are balancing enrollment between those two middle schools, Fort Settlement and First Colony. Our recommendation, um, provided this, or not provided, but, you know, recalling that this has been addressed, as was shared this evening, by community input in the twenty-fourteen feeder pattern work, again, in the twenty-eighteen facilities master planning process, and recommended, um, in the fall for, uh, twenty nineteen, community engagement to align or to work in tandem with the creation or planning for the boundaries for Elementary School Fifty-Three for implementation in twenty twenty-one would be our recommendation. We want to provide an opportunity this evening to talk through an alternate plan that could expedite this process in the spring of, I'm fairly certain that should say twenty nineteen, not twenty twenty-nine, um, for implementation in the nineteen-twenty school year. Uh, this would be a short-term solen, solution, pending full, a full boundary process in that nineteen-twenty school year, or during the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year to align with the boundaries for Elementary School Fifty-Three. So in summary, um, we're going to continue the feasibility study around Yusav Saidi and the decision to open in January of twenty twenty or August twenty twenty for a decision at the end of this month. Limit and encourage student transfers, limit in our over-utilized areas, and encourage, um, also in the over-utilized areas to encourage to attend schools that may be under-utilized in the area. We'll utilize portable buildings, monitor enrollment and projected enrollment, and then, um, make a determination for the attendance boundary planning for Elementary Fifty-Three and to balance enrollment between Fort Settlement and First Colony.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. Mr. Rosentholz, do you have a question or comment?
As a matter of fact, I do. So thank you, Beth, for that, we appreciate the, the thorough overview, um, and you had pointed out, and I was just gonna kinda start with recapping, uh, you kinda said some of it, but, uh, we recall on May fourteenth, we decided, um, not to build additions at Fort Settlement Middle School and First Colony Middle School, and that we would address that issue now. The PASA data and administration have absolutely acknowledged that in twenty twenty-one, Fort Settlement Middle School will be over-capacity. I mean, actually, over a hundred percent. I think as was just stated, um, I think the number was projected for next year was right at about ninety-five percent. And so, uh, also next year, so there's about five hundred kids, plus kids, coming into Fort Settlement, and only four hundred and ninety-three graduating from Fort Settlement. And that may not, may not take into account, certainly, the new growth, we still see that there's a thousand and some fifteen-hundred, um, homes yet to be built in Riverstone. Um, it may not take into account more students coming in from private schools, because there's a lot of private schools that are only at elementary level. Um, and I don't know, and we talked about this on the phone today, and I don't know if you had answered that, you know, in an email or not, but I'm not sure that that talks about overflow at, at Commonwealth, um, overflow from Commonwealth that's currently at Austin Parkway.
It does include.
Okay, it does, good, okay. And so I think what we, we also just saw from the PASA data was that, um, this year, you know, traditionally or historically, they kinda missed on the low end, you know, they were kinda, their predictions were kinda on the low end. This year, the reality was on their high end of their projections. So even that might indicate that, that six hundred and, or sixteen hundred and thirty-three number could, could be low. So, plus not taking into account some of those other things. And so, um, I had asked several questions last week, and I appreciate you answering those in, you know, with, with absolute candor. Um, I really do appreciate that, and I'd like to, to discuss some of the, the responses. One was the likelihood of adding a fourth-period lunch, or a fourth lunch, I should say, over at, um, Fort Settlement or additional seating. And that could mean that, that the A lunch could start at, like, ten forty-five in the morning, and school doesn't start until, what, nine oh-five, nine-ten, somewhere in there, at the middle school. So, you know, that doesn't seem like that would be a very good solution. The other thing that was stated was, um, the need to convert storage areas into classrooms. And, uh, we also heard, you know, from the community that the principal was talking about bringing in portables. And that's kinda consistent with, uh, what Mr. Gamati, uh, emailed me, uh, and may have emailed the rest of you too, uh, that I pointed out on the phone, as far as Baines Middle School. When Baines Middle School kinda hit that peak, they brought in, what, half a dozen trailers or so. So that, it kinda makes sense, what, what's been said, because historically, that's what's happened. And, um, the other thing was, at Fort Settlement, in order to accommodate all these, these students, we've had to increase the size of pre-AP classrooms up to thirty-three students in some cases. And as you and I talked about on the phone, I, two years ago, when I was teaching, I had one of those pre-AP classes, and there were some really smart kids there, but remember, they're middle school, okay? You know, when I used to tell people, "Well, yeah, I just started teaching." "Well, what grade?" "Eighth grade." "What, are you nuts?" I mean, they may be really smart kids, right, but they're eighth graders or seventh graders, so they're not gonna just sit still in seats and whatnot, and it makes it really difficult when you have a class, because I had one, it was like thirty-one kids in there. And it makes it really hard to differentiate your learning or your teaching, and sometimes control the class. I mean, it's, it just, it creates difficulties. So, you know, to me, I, I think that's, that's not fair to some of those, those, those pre-AP kids that are sitting in, in classes that have thirty-three kids. Um, the other thing that was brought up in some of the comments was the increase in stress level. So from the statistics, um, that Dr. Dupree, um, provided, from the fall of twenty seventeen to the fall of twenty eighteen, the number of council visits almost doubled. So that, to me, is indicating there's a lot of stress going on. Um, fifty percent of the sixth graders cannot enroll in theater. And as I mentioned, the historical data with Baines, where they kinda did that. So in my opinion, this tells me that that school is currently at capacity. So we may call it ninety percent, ninety-five percent, whatever it is, I don't really think that that reflects the, you know, what's, what's happening, what matches, what's matching on the ground. And so, I honestly think that this is why people still have problems with some of our numbers. Um, because when you're talking about either bringing in portables or, you know, finding other rooms to use as classrooms, that tells me that, no matter what your number is, whether it's not, again, whether it's ninety-five...